Just so everybody knows, we're previously in executive session discussing a union matter. And we'll start our agenda. The first item on is pledge of allegiance. So stand if you're able and join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. Next item on our agenda is public comment. Does anyone wish to speak on anything not on tonight's agenda? Seeing no one, I will move on. Discussion items? Oh, sorry, made you wait, Bill.
Congratulations to the class of 2018 for officially finishing strong. Your hard work over the past four years has paid off. And good luck in all of your future endeavors. Thank you to the concert choir, TV production group, the band and the class and executive boards for their help in commemorating the senior last assembly and graduation last week. And congratulations to Mr. Brandigan for being inducted into the Special Olympics of Massachusetts Hall of Fame tonight at Gillette Stadium. You do so much to ensure the inclusion of all students at MHS and it does not go unnoticed. Good luck to all the tournament-bound playoff teams. Girls and boys tennis played well but were eliminated. Softball and baseball are still alive and well. Baseball won today. Today was the career fair at the high school, a great opportunity for sophomores and juniors to begin looking at fields that interest them. Next Tuesday is AP night where students can meet their AP teachers and get their summer work for their courses. New officers have been elected for the National Honor Society as well as Middleborough High School's Silver M Society. And yesterday and today, students who took biology second semester engaged in the Biology MCAS. From all accounts, they did well and focused on the important test. Thank you.
Owen, who became the officers for honor and Silver M?
National Honor Society president was Josh Young. Silver M president is Dylan Tobias. After that, I'm not exactly sure.
Joshua?
What?
Who did you say was National Honor Society?
Josh.
Oh, nice if I do.
Well, just wondering.
Thank you very much. I wasn't asking for that reason. I was asking to actually know. Thank you for telling a family member, my friend. Now you will be the reason, the person he hates tomorrow morning when you arrive at school, as you realize. Thank you, Owen. Does anyone have any questions for Owen? Great. Thanks, Owen. Does any committee member have anything they wish to talk about? Mr. Chivino?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It was a great weekend, great weather. Saturday, great presentations at graduation for the Middleborough High School. And then Sunday evening was awesome as well. I think that when you see the faces of some of the students that had a little more adversity but did it and achieved, I really, I really get a kick out of that. And that was the Sunday evening school that Middleborough has, which people don't realize that we have three high schools in our school system. But the night school, the alternative day, and then the day. So, I mean, just awesome, awesome weekend. When Owen was talking about the career fair, my son did tell me that our OPM, our Onus Project Manager for the school building project was actually there as well, with, I guess, a table set up and talking about what project management and engineering. And that was a great little piece to see them.
Mr. Chivino, DRA was also there.
DRA was there? Yeah, awesome. Yeah, I overheard the conversation as I was walking out the door. My son was talking to my wife and I'm like, "I gotta go to a meeting." But he did say he saw the Compass Project Management and good to see DRA there as well because great careers potential. So, I want to thank them for coming out and all those, all those groups coming up for that, that, that career day. It's a, it's a great opportunity. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Rowe?
I too got to participate in graduation this past Saturday and it was my first time seeing the Middleborough graduation. It was just an excellently run program from top to bottom, from the band and the chorus to the students themselves. Mr. Lynch and Mr. Brandigan gave great words of advice, but mostly reflected on those kids. And you could see with Matt and Ian and Evan and their speeches to their classmates how strong that class was. So it was an honor to be there. So thank you for inviting me.
Anybody else? I do want to make note of something. And I know we generally try to stay out of politics here. Mr. Oakley and myself attended the Democratic Convention this past weekend. And I did want to tell everybody that when the Attorney General was nominated, as part of her speech, she mentioned the Middleborough Station supporters and having met them, which she did a couple of weeks ago. And we were extraordinarily impressed by that and told her so afterwards. But I did want to let the community know that she thought so much of them, to mention them as part of her speech. It was quite moving, especially for those of us there. So, I did want to say that. Next up is Mr. Catino. Only a few short weeks, Mr. Catino.
Yeah, those few short weeks can seem like the longest when you're trying to sit through all of the field trips and everything that decimates your class and you're trying to finish up the curriculum. It's amazing how much time the students are out at this time of the year. But that's like part and parcel to what goes on. So, I would like to, you know, congratulate the class of 2018. The Middleborough Education Association, as they've done for many years. We were outside handing flowers out and cards to the mothers and the, and the fathers as they were exiting. And congratulation to them for seeing their students through a long process to get them to graduation. So that's, that's our message. So, that's what I have. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you. We really appreciate that. I know everyone loves that and are often quite surprised when they walk out for the first time and see you guys doing that. So I know the community really appreciates that.
Yeah, many, many of the parents think that the flowers are for the students, but they're not. They're actually for them. And this year, I mean, we've been increasing the number of flowers that we get every year because they, they seem to be fairly popular. We ran out of flowers before we ran out of parents that were coming out. So, I think next year we're gonna have to go with about 300. We did 250 flowers this year, plus the cards that we hand out, so.
Thank you very mu- Any questions for Mr. Catino? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Next up on our agenda is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, members of the audience. I too want to acknowledge the class of 2018. I characterize them as a great class at graduation because I think they really have some shared great characteristics. They've done a lot for the school. They've done a lot for the community. Kudos to Paul Brandigan and his faculty and staff for putting together a week of activities, actually about a week and a half of activities, focusing on those seniors, and then bouncing right back and really focusing on the students who are in the school for the remainder of the year, which is, I think, just so awesome. I don't think he, he breathes before, he's back there Monday, the following graduation, and working with the younger folks in the school and acknowledging everything they've done. I in particular want to mention Marsha Holmgren, who's the secretary to the principal at the high school, who basically, for the past month, has been, her focus has been on this last week and a half or so. And she just does an awesome job. And kudos to Marsha Holmgren. In the central office and the secretary to the principal at the high school, she does it every year and does a great job and really burns the midnight oil. And just very impressed with all the work she's done.
If I can also add, Mr. Lynch, I do want to say something. When Mr. Lynch got here, for those who don't know, it was a stamp for each of the diplomas. And when Mr. Lynch got here, his recommendation to myself and Mr. Brandigan was that we each sign, along with him, sign them individually. And so, I appreciate Marsha. She makes time for us and finds a place for us to go. And the three of us do sign each of those diplomas individually. And Mr. Lynch was the one who started that. I know for a lot of kids, a lot of kids made comments about that afterwards and they appreciate that. They're like, "Is this a stamp? Doesn't look like a stamp." So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Are we gonna give an auto pen next year?
No auto pens. Sign, seal, deliver. Well, you guys deliver them. We just sort of sign and seal them. First on my agenda this evening are our school improvement plans. As you know, Mr. Brandigan presented his school improvement plan for Middleborough High School at our last meeting. This is the chance for the principals of the other four schools to present their school improvement plans. And I would invite down to the desk in front of you, starting on your program here, John T. Nichols Junior Middle School Principal Marty Gagin, Henry B. Berkland School Principal Derek Thompson, Mary K. Good Elementary School Principal Lisa, and Memorial Early Childhood Center Principal Holly. And I appreciate Holly rushing back. She had a faculty member whose mom died and she drove all the way down to Yarmouth tonight to go to the wake, and she rushed back for that. Bridget Clements, and Godspeed to her mom. And we do appreciate you hustling back for this meeting. So, thank you. Take it away, folks.
Okay, thanks. I'm up first. I just want to start off by mentioning and reminding our school committee members that as an elementary team, we work together for many, many meetings to create a school improvement plan that is aligned. We really work to have that vertical alignment from pre-K through grade five. So we meet together regularly. The goals will look a little familiar to you as you've seen in the past. They're very similar to start with because we work on a plan that is larger than one year. So we're really looking at goals that span more like a three to five-year term. And you'll see some differences and nuanced changes in the action steps as we go through. So the first goal we have is, goal one, through a comprehensive partnership with Leslie University, we will improve literacy instruction and student performance for all students in grades K to five. So this is a goal that we've had for a few years, but at this point, it's getting a little exciting for us. My colleagues tease me a little bit because I'm a reading specialist at heart and a trained reading recovery teacher. So this is really my favorite goal. And at this point, at this point, we're really getting into the meat of what we were hoping to have happen. We had our first cohort of teachers trained in grades three through five. And next year, they will continue their professional development in the Leslie model. And they will be getting individualized coaching from our literacy coaches. In addition to that, we'll have our second cohort starting their journey down this path. They'll be getting the intensive training that the first group got. So our two three-through-five coaches will be extremely busy because on top of their efforts to provide the coaching, they're also walking the walk and talking the talk because they're in the classroom as well. We are starting with our first cohort of grades K to two. So we have three coaches who have been trained in primary. And they're starting to provide the coaching for a group of teachers. So there's a lot going on in literacy, a lot of coaching, a lot of professional development. As you see, one of the action steps is our PD plan for 18, 19. That PD plan is pretty detailed. There's one for cohort one, one for cohort two, three through five, and then another one for cohort one, K to two. So it's a lot of work, but we do enjoy it. In addition, we continue to add the professional resources that are necessary for all of this work. We continue to add to our classroom libraries and to our bookrooms to strengthen the resources that are available to our teachers. We're continuing to have our teachers dig into data through, using the resource of the Continuum of Literacy Learning as well as using the STAR 360 Benchmark Assessments in one through five, Level Literacy Intervention in K through five, sorry, K through three, and Reading Recovery in grade one. All three buildings continue providing PLCs, Professional Learning Communities, for our teachers and working to strengthen our response to intervention model, our RTI model, where we're intervening with students as we identify that they're struggling. And finally, with the work that has been done with Deb Harris, we're going to be continuing some coaching for our special education teachers.
Mr. Chair, while we're there, on special ed teachers, we've been working with them because I remember going back three years, maybe four years at this point, when we really identified that our special education students, the literacy piece, when you start going into standardized testing, was really, even at the high school level, we should have started at third grade, you know, second grade. So we're really focusing on that and these, this training because I saw how the cohorts are working.
Yeah. So there's a, there's a huge focus on early literacy. So students in kindergarten, right from the very beginning, we're starting to identify students who are struggling in kindergarten as early as really November. Originally, we waited a little while. In the last three years, we've decided that, you know, we're going to follow the research that shows as early as November, you can start intervening with kindergarteners who are struggling. So that's what we're doing.
Thank you.
So I'm gonna present our math goal. I would like to start by saying, I think, as you could see evidenced by that last goal, in this goal here, we have a lot of good stuff going on in all three schools. And I just feel like I need to start by saying, and I know I'm speaking on behalf of everybody, that just express our appreciation and thanks for the school committee, the budget subcommittee, Mr. Lynch, Mrs. Pietelli, for just being supportive of the work that we're doing and kind of fighting for what we're doing. And our plans are much more complex than I think you get out of the quick snapshot. So hopefully, everyone's had a chance to really look through the plans and see the data and the reasons why we have the things that we have in place. Our math goal is to continue to align and implement curriculum instruction and assessment in math to ensure the improvement growth with all students K to five. So we're gonna continue with the implementation of our math program. This year, we partnered with Susan Looney Consulting. She's been really well received. She's a recognized math consultant in Massachusetts. And with her, we developed curriculum maps. So just to make sure that we're not just teaching a program and following the book from beginning to end, but that we're teaching the standards, we're supplementing as needed, and we're removing things that don't need to be there. You know, a program like that is designed for all states, including states like Texas, and they're focusing on standards, maybe in third grade, that aren't standards in Massachusetts. So those maps help make sure that we can spend time in the areas that we need to. So we'll be in full implementation of those maps this year. We finished developing them this year and started using them around February in all three schools. Next year, we'll be starting right off the bat from the beginning of the year. The other thing we're excited about is we are going to begin working with Susan Looney similar to the way we're doing our literacy work. So the teachers starting next year that are not in the literacy cohort with Leslie, because not every teacher goes through that training at the same time. It's so intensive. It happens in smaller groups. Those teachers that are not in the literacy training are gonna be trained in math with Susan Looney. And the goal is to implement the workshop model in guided math. Really just, it's about an investment in teacher's skillset so that we know how to teach numeracy. We can meet kids where they're at. And, you know, I might be a fourth grade teacher, but I still know how to teach a kid the foundational skills that they need in order to learn how to divide or multiply or just really differentiate our instruction, really meet kids where they're at. Because you can't skip steps when it comes to teaching math. So, another piece we're excited about, we were able and fortunate to secure a grant for both Mary K. Good and HBB for the ST Math Program. That's a substantial grant and it's, it's a phenomenal program. ST Math is a computerized program where there's no language attached. And it really focuses on conceptual understanding for students. It's all self-driven. It's differentiated. It meets kids right where they're at. I did a good portion of the program with my own daughter last year who struggles in math. The only rule was that I wasn't allowed to help her. I needed to just sit there and watch so I could get an idea of how the program works. It's impressive. And I know Mr. Lynch has experience with it in his past school district. It's, it's a proven program. It's recognized. And it doesn't replace our curriculum. It's just a supplement to the curriculum. So, for example, like kids in grades K one and two, I think K is the same timing. And hopefully, we're gonna, we'll get there with K. But it's three times 30 minutes a week. So we're gonna build it into our schedule and into our routine in our centers within our math workshop where kids are logging on, on their own time, sitting down and participating in the program. And then it gives us good data back to show the teachers where kids are still struggling conceptually. So, most of our data through STAR 360 MCAS suggests that mostly kids are falling down with the conceptual understanding. We do a good job teaching kids the routines. They know the algorithms. They know how to solve the problems. But, you know, once things become more complex and they're not seeing numbers and what they're doing and thinking and seeing numeracy with what they're doing, they start to struggle. So this program will really help us with that. And then, as Mrs. Anderson ended, same, same piece with, with math, where we're really continuing to focus on that structured PLC, looking at our data, making sure that we have systems of support for all of our kids, including special ed. I know, Mr. Gianavone, you asked that question. It's the same thing with math, too. Making sure that we're supporting kids on all tiers of that RTI framework.
Mr. Thompson, just a question in regard to the math, and I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Yeah.
We do, we have hired Susan Looney Consulting to do some work with our teachers.
Yeah.
Have you had a discussion about ST Math with her and where she, where she feels or what's, what's her stand on, on the utilization of ST Math?
Yeah.
As, as a sort of an add-on curriculum piece?
Yeah, she's very supportive of it. Most of our teachers now, and she recommends this, is when we, so part of what we're doing is trying to lessen the amount of teacher talk. So lessons are, you know, 10 to 15 minutes of teacher talk. And then kids are up working at, she calls it, their just right math level. So that requires a lot of planning on, on teacher's part. And, you know, even she suggests having one of those stations be a computer-based station. Right now, we currently use Prodigy a lot, which is a solid program, but it's nowhere near what ST Math is with the research that backs it. It's a good program. Kids like it. I think it, Prodigy's been helpful. But I think ST Math is a little bit more substantial.
Good to hear. Thank you.
So goal three is our science goal and to ensure alignment and implementation of curriculum and instruction with the new Massachusetts Science and Technology and Engineering Standards. We are continuing with implementing the Discovery Ed Tech Book school-wide. We're supplementing our science as well with lab and mystery science and science spin. Professional development provided by Discovery Ed. There was a glitch with Discovery Ed's providing PD this year. So they will be beginning their journey with us with PD in, in August. And we're also going to be continuing some initial work with developing curriculum maps in grades K through five at each grade level. That was a big piece this year. Many of our teachers that were not in the Leslie cohort or in the, in the younger grades really took the science and took it apart, looked at those standards and started to create some mapping and started to create some assessments that go along with the science standards. So our plan is to really dig deep with that work this year and align it for each grade level. And also to develop common assessments to ensure that we're effectively implementing and monitoring with, with the program and with our students as well.
Nope, back to you. Sorry. At this point, we branch off a little bit and each school shows a little bit of our unique identity. So, starting with MAC, goals four and five. Goal four is to improve student performance by developing comprehensive family and community partnership. And some of the highlights around that are really working with our Family Resource Center. You've heard a lot in these meetings about how crucial our Family Resource Center is for so many families and for so many of the events that we have happening in the district. But one of the things that we discovered at MAC was that even with all of those efforts we have out there, there were still families who hadn't heard of Meg Quirk and hadn't heard about the Family Resource Center. So through our school council, we talked about what could we do to ensure that every single family entering Middleborough knew that this was a resource available to them? You know, it's a, it's a large investment that we're making in our families to assist them in a variety of ways. And we want to make sure that as many families are taking advantage of it as we can. So the very first thing that we started talking about was how could we expand Meg's exposure to our families in Middleborough? So on top of all of the things that she's already doing, she's going to be investing some additional time making sure that she meets with every single family in kindergarten. And that actually started this year. We put it in our plan for next year so that it will continue. But it started this year with our revamped screening and registration process. So she had a table of her own at our screening and registration and she was the checkout person. And it was one of the stations that everyone had to go to and they received a sticker. So we knew that every family that came through our doors to be screened and registered, they would also meet Meg Quirk personally. She would hand out her brochure. She would hand out her card. She'd talk about some of these events that are further on down in, in our goals for our countdown to K. So she had that personal connection with families, which she's so great at doing. So we're really hopeful that moving forward, that will be an automatic expansion of, of people in Middleborough knowing about her and knowing about that resource. As I mentioned, Countdown to K is continuing to expand. One of the things that, again, Meg Quirk has really worked hard to do is to partner with our town library. And our town library has a Play Your Way to K. So there have been some playgroups for our younger children. I'm actually going to be running one with Ms. Amanda next week. So I'm excited about that. I'll be over at the library and meeting some of our young friends who will be coming in to kindergarten in the fall. Some of the things that have happened in the past are still happening. We're going to have our very popular picnic at Soul Farm. It's become the highlight of my summer. And this year, we had our spring block party. And I have to tell you that it actually brought tears to my eyes as I walked around. And it was truly a party. Everyone was having so much fun. We had pre-K students. We had incoming K students. We had current K students. We had the police there. We had the fire department there. And it really felt like a big old block party. It was, it was a fun day. School council has talked a lot about our volunteer programs. We have a pretty robust volunteer program at MAC. So one of the things we wanted to work hard to do was to expand our orientation and training for our volunteers so that they understood what's expected of them when they come into our classroom. Because often our volunteers are asked to maybe work with some students in centers or reading with some students. So providing that training for them was crucial. This past year, we did one training in the fall and we had a brochure available for them. Next year, we've talked about having three trainings. So one in the fall, one in the winter, and one in the spring so that we can really capitalize on our volunteers. And then finally, one of my own personal goals was to work on our website, get that up and running and have the ability to update it regularly. I think I met that goal pretty well, but it's definitely still a goal that I'd like to improve on. I'd like it to be, I really would like it to be the place where people go for their information. We do have a Facebook page for MAC and we do have a Twitter handle for MAC. But I still find that most parents are getting their information on the parent pages. So I'm really hoping to improve that information for, for folks. Goal five, providing and maintaining a safe physical and emotional environment to support instruction that meets 21st century learning demands. I talked last year about a lot of the social-emotional learning that was happening at MAC. This year, we're taking that and taking it a step further. So, all of the information that teachers learned through the training that we received with Kelly Rodriguez and early childhood consultants, we're taking that and really implementing it with far greater fidelity and regularity. Every single classroom, as well as next year, all of our special area classrooms will have a calm down corner. So teachers reported that there was a reduction in need to send students to the office for behavior issues because of their use of these de-escalation strategies that they had learned and because they were using calm down corners and providing that opportunity for students. So we've decided that we'll expand that into our special area classrooms. We're going to be expanding our school-wide positive programs to improve the consistency of language. So we actually are kind of taking a cue from what's happened over at the complex where they're focusing on school-wide conversations around social thinking. We'll be bringing that down to MAC as well. And, oh, and the first one, I forgot. We had a lot of discussion about our dismissal procedures. So for those of you who don't know how that works, at MAC, we load all of our kindergarteners onto four buses. onto four buses, and then those buses head over to the complex where they get off those buses and get onto their regular bus to take them home. So that can be a little bit confusing, and at the start of that system, we have everyone in our cafeteria and in our gymnasium at the same time every day. And when we start talking about safety and where our students are and the possible need for evacuation, we realize that that probably wasn't the best thing to be happening, a consistent time for our entire student body to be in the same place. So we have worked really hard to revamp that, so we will be having students leaving the building through different doors. It's a big ask, but I do think it will work out well next year, especially starting right off in the beginning of the year.
So the Mary Kay Good Goals. Goal Four, improve student performance by developing a comprehensive family and community partnership. Where I did really good with Twitter this year, I think. I'm very proud of myself with my Twitter. Working on my Facebook page. Not there yet with Facebook, but I'm very proud of our Twitter and website pages. We're going to continue with our after-school clubs. Those have been a big hit. The only thing is, it depends upon... Sometimes I hear, oh, there's not enough clubs for this particular age. It depends on, you know, the teacher's interest and what the teachers sign up for to have a club. So we're hoping to have a larger area, you know, span of clubs. We're going to borrow from our friends next door with our parent survey next year. We did the same parent survey two years in a row, and I did that on purpose so I could compare data, but I really liked what HBB did with the conditions for learning, so we're going to transition to that this year as well. We are in the midst of our transmission meetings right now, actually, and we found them to be very beneficial. Not only transition meetings within our school, but we do them with the MAC, with our incoming first graders, and we do them with Mr. Gagan and his team, and it really has made such a difference with placement. And another piece, I know Mrs. Hargrave has mentioned the registration, the kindergarten registration, and I got to be part of that this year, and it was amazing, and I loved being part of it because, you know, many of the families that came through, they're going to, I call them future MKG'ers, and already building that relationship and already building, you know, getting to know the kiddos coming through from Middleborough. It was a wonderful experience. And we rely as well, very, very heavily, on our Family Resource Center. Meg has been wonderful with, you name it, this year with our families. It's been wonderful, absolutely wonderful, and we definitely lean on her, and our families definitely lean on her a lot with many items that are clothing and housing and, you know, new families to the community of where do I sign up for baseball? You know, so she's been wonderful. Goal Five, creating an environment where students feel emotionally and physically safe so their learning potential can be maximized. We're continuing to utilize our classroom behavioral systems, continue to use our ticket system. It's ticket redemption time, and it's heated right now at the Mary Kay Good, because everybody wants to be the first one, first class at the ticket redemption booth. So we're going to maintain our school store. We're going to continue with our Super Flex and our social thinking curriculum, our monthly BERT meetings, which Mr. Phoenix is our chairman of our BERT team and meets monthly to update our safety procedures. Our grade-level town meetings have been great, and we're going to change them a little bit timing-wise. We used to have them at the end of the day, and we found that 2:30 to 3:00, especially on that Friday, was not working. So we've revamped it, that we're going to make them first thing in the morning. We're going to do 9:00 to 9:30 instead of the afternoon. We finally will get a bigger bang for our buck at that time. And we're going to continue to provide RTI in the area of social-emotional learning and through our use of our universal screener. So, you know, we added the social-emotional piece to our RTI. We also brought in yoga this year. One of our parents is a yoga instructor, and she... We did it kind of as a trial this year, so she definitely wants to expand it next year to have yoga as an RTI in the morning. So we're looking to expand that. It made a very big difference with our kiddo, so it was wonderful.
So developing three different plans in three different schools when we have three different school councils is definitely a challenge, just in terms of the work that it takes to make sure that all the plans are aligned. So I just wanted to start by, I wanted to publicly thank the school council that I was with. So my teachers, Dominique Dyer, Lisa Kaufman, Melinda Madigan, and then the parents that were on my committee, Paula Lazon, Christine Hoyle, Amanda Davidson, and Brandy Baromio. I had a really good group with me this year. We had some great conversations, looking at data and trying to figure out what to do to move HBB forward, all while being understanding that we need to be aligned with two other schools. So it was great. So we have one less goal this year, which I'm really proud of. We've eliminated a goal. So actually, I'm going to talk about our survey first. So we've implemented the Conditions for Learning survey, and I think if you look at our plan in the end, you can see the results of that survey. So the Conditions for Learning survey is based in research, and it says that schools that have good measures in certain areas have the Conditions for Learning. It's pretty simple. So it's a survey that is given to students, staff, and parents. All the questions are aligned, and they're measuring five different domains and 15 different measures. So those, some of those measures are social-emotional competencies for students and for adults. It's measuring school climate, academic engagement. It's a much more comprehensive, targeted, thoughtful survey than, I think, the ones that we've made up in the past. At the bottom of the survey, there's a little grid that shows generally what is considered average, normal, below average. Our scores were really good. They were positive from our students, from our staff, from our parents. And so we felt like specifically, with the past goal that we've had about creating and ensuring solid home-school connections, we've outgrown that goal. It doesn't mean it's not still a focus for us, but it's been there for us for six years. When I first came on, it was really about a focus of increasing communication between home and school, because that was a problem. We've done a lot in that area. We don't really have any complaints about communication back and forth. We've done a lot, everything from how we communicate homework to just communication in general, we've tackled a lot over the years through that goal. And connecting with families that are in need, I think we've done a lot. The Family Resource Center started in our building. We too rely on Meg for everything. We have a lot of really good things going on. So we're not stopping with that work. We just didn't think it warranted being in our plan as something we need to focus on to move our school forward anymore. We feel like we're in a good place with that, so we're moving past that. What we are continuing with is, and we tweaked somewhat this year to be a little bit more focused, ensure that all students have the social and emotional learning skills required to meet with success in school. One interesting split that we had in our results, because we've been doing a lot. I mean, we have our grade-level community meetings every morning. We have the language instilled across the building. Everybody's trained in social thinking and Super Flex. All our kids are exposed to the lessons that are being delivered to kids. We have Tier Two intervention groups for kids that we... So we've given a universal screener. We've identified kids that we think are at risk. We pull them out in the morning. We've been working with those kids as well. One of the interesting things that we found is there's a little bit of a split between what our staff are reporting. It's still within the normal range, but... So student SEL competency, it's a lot of questions focused on whether kids are implementing the skills we're teaching, and students reporting are adults supporting us in that regard. So there's a split there, which we've had a lot of conversation about, and I think is very much consistent with what we dealt with in reading a long time ago. When I first came into the building, we did a lot to target kids in reading, and what we were initially finding was it wasn't having the kind of impact we wanted because we weren't as connected into the classroom as we wanted to. Kids were going out, and there was a little bit of a, okay, someone else is going to fix that problem, and then they're going to come back to my room. Oh, wait a minute, they're still acting the same way. So we think we need to do a better job just integrating those two things, so hence some of the focus areas you see in our plan. We're going to... So that bullet there, moving from concepts taught to being integrated, is basically us acknowledging it's not enough to just teach it. We have to make sure that we're all owning it and working with our kids in the moment, beyond community meeting and beyond the lesson. So we're going to really increase the amount of push-in services that we're going to offer. We're still going to have Tier Two intervention groups, especially for... We had 60 new kids in our school this year. Almost all of them are identified at risk on our universal screener, so we're just going to go ahead, and all those kids are going to be the kids that we're going to have in that group, starting right off the bat. All the kids who move in over the summer, that's who we're going to start with. So that, you know, we figure there's no harm in that. All those kids are going to be taught the curriculum. They haven't been taught it anyway, so we're going to catch them up to speed with the language that we're using in our building. And then we're going to have a few less staff providing that Tier Two intervention. We're going to go into the classroom and do a little bit more of the work with the teachers and also work with a lot of teachers that aren't... have struggled to figure out where, because of a lot of the curriculum initiatives we have, to fit in community meetings within their room. I think, just think that's a really important part of the school day, to make sure that we're teaching kids the social skills that they need and making sure that we're establishing that environment in the classroom. We can't skip that step and jump right into math. You know, kids need empathy skills to... We've talked about this before here. If they don't have empathy skills, they're not going to understand an author's purpose. If they don't care about the kid sitting next to them, they're definitely not going to care about what an author's message is in a book. So those skills are really important to teach, so we just think that this is important to move in our school forward. So... And then we're going to continue to increase home support, which we're working with Meg on that, but also having... We have some plans for a number of parent nights specific to the language that we're using with social-emotional learning. Yeah?
I understand, one of the things, I did look at the Conditions for Learning survey. Do you have the ability to add questions to it?
We do.
Because one of the questions I would really like you both to add in that realm is about the physical space.
Mm-hmm.
And primarily because as we, you know, there's a lot of emphasis on progressing in high school. We built recently a kindergarten. This building is relatively new. Yours is not. And I don't mean that meanly, but I mean that in, I don't want it neglected, but I also want parent input for how they feel about it and kid input for how they feel about it, because I think that's important as we move forward.
Yeah, so I just, this is an interesting point. I have to jump on it.
Sure.
And I've shared this with Brian. There are questions about facilities in this survey, and we've asked these questions before, and we've generally gotten slammed by parents, you know? But the way they're worded in this survey, and I think this is important, and I need to do a better job bringing this back to the custodians and sharing this with them, is do the facilities get in the way of learning? No. They don't. We've got really positive, like, the building is clean, it's ready to go every day. So I like the way the questions have been asked, because the questions are asked in a way that this is the part that is within our control. We can make sure the building's clean and ready, that the kids have what they need. So I almost feel like that would be like a question we would have to put aside from this survey, specific.
And maybe. And that's, you know, in my mind, it's just, you know, both my kids went to both your schools.
Yeah.
And so I, you know, I've been there, I've seen, you know. I think the custodians do a fantastic job. But I think over time, as with the current high school, you know, just buildings continue over time to deteriorate because they're old, and you're not going to be able to fix everything. You know, I also know that we're putting money into fix the lighting for both the schools and to create more opportunities for environmentally for that lighting, which I think is fantastic. But by the same token, I would be interested in hearing people's opinion. Not, and I don't look upon it as a knock to custodians at all, the same way I don't look upon, you know, complaints about the high school as a knock to custodians. I think they do a fantastic job, and I think, given the resources that they have and, you know, the sizes of the school and what, how they were built, and I think that's the biggest thing people need to realize, it's about how they were built. We are creating space that spaces weren't in time, weren't going to be used for. And, you know, the expectation is, okay, this becomes this, and this becomes this when it wasn't created that way. And that's one of the things that excites me about the high school. But by the same token, I also think, you know, one of the things that we have to look at going forward for all the schools are all those schools were created at a time when we didn't really spend a whole lot of time thinking about school security at the front doors and how people get in and out and move about. And so I think, you know, we need to think about that, too. So that's what I'd be interested in hearing. And if it's separate, that's fine, but I was just thinking of that. We're sort of focused on the high school, and I feel like you guys get ignored a little bit. And I know, you know, like I said, I know we're putting money into the program, but that's, I just want to hear from people about it, too.
Yeah, we can definitely work those questions, and there's no question about it.
I look at, I look at the gymnasium, it's always going to be one of those items that we could always use a little more gym space, absolutely. But have you, have you looked at some of the new populations that are coming into town right now? We've got a lot of building going on right down the street from your... I don't know which...
It'd be mine.
You'll end up with the ones on Mayflower, but you're ending up with the ones on Route 28.
Yeah.
So there's 200 units going in. How are the classroom sizes? I mean, that's what I'm thinking about as well. Are we seeing numbers starting to jump? You know, are we able to handle it at this time? Or I don't have an answer readily available, but what do you think?
Yeah, I think we're good right now. It'll be interesting to see what happens over the summer. That's when we're going to know.
Okay.
We've already had people start to show up to register over the last couple days.
That's what I was wondering.
That'll be interesting to see what happens.
You're going to have the same thing, of course.
There's a lot of building going on, too. I mean, so...
Yes, there is.
Last I knew, there was like 57 or something.
57 new houses, I think, this past year, some new permits. Yeah, it's unbelievable.
Yeah.
Yeah, currently under construction.
So I mean, you know, it's always a concern for us over the summer, and, you know, you watch it, and it never fails, last year it was my second grade. It seemed every child that signed up was going to second grade. So I think, you know, it's something that we definitely have to be mindful of over the summer.
Mr. Chair, just a quick comment on the complex. I would tell you that the facilities on the business office have identified certain projects at that building and continue to work on a regular basis on improving. We worked on air quality when I first started up. There's a $278,000 lighting project going on in July and August. We have new boilers in the buildings, new burners in the buildings. We have a new library that was constructed at Berklin in space that was not being used in the cafeteria. That happened a couple summers ago. We've completely reconstructed the pool system with a new boiler and a new filter system at the pool. All the lighting in the pool has been redone. So it's not a complex that's been ignored in terms of its needs and the future. And what we are doing is trying to make the best of what we currently have. So it is something that is definitely on the front burner with regard to the facilities office, so.
Done in the past, we've put into MSBA for additional funds for a wide variety of things and, you know, been told no a couple of times.
Yeah, and we've done a complete window job at the Mary Kay Good School, about 2012. All the windows were redone at the Mary Kay Good School, so. There have been major projects done at that complex. It's not something that's just been sitting there since the late '50s, early '60s, so.
Thank you.
Marty.
Thank you. Good evening. I think Ms. Hargrave's kind of said it best when she said that we were just here about a month ago, and a lot of this is going to sound similar to what we presented then because we are kind of continuing and kind of think of our plan as a three-to-five-year plan. This year, though, has been neat because we had new members of our school improvement committee come in, and I had a brand-new sixth-grade parent, a seventh-grade parent, who I truly appreciate, and then a new teacher came aboard, and just new sets of eyes definitely kind of help in trying to build it and what we're trying to do. And then also during this whole year, we've been working as an administrative team on the district strategic improvement plan, and with that, we really were studying it as a school council. And a lot of our time was taken looking at the strategic plan for the district and saying, where do we match up as a school? So one of my goals, when we'll get to it, is straight word-for-word with the district strategic plan, because we liked the way it was written, and we liked how it sounded, and we thought that is exactly what we're trying to do at the Nichols. So our first goal here really does kind of concentrate on the really big, meaty, strategic goal of a culture of innovation and achievement and trying to figure out, how do we make that work? How do we really make that happen? And being in this building now for six years, we really had to concentrate on the curriculum and try to get to the heart of the curriculum for many of my first few years here. And now, all of a sudden, it's like, okay, we have the curriculum written, we have it there, but now how do we make sure, and Mr. Thompson kind of mentioned this, how do we make sure that it's being taught or how do we make sure it's being learned? Like, we could teach it, we could say it's there, it's a written curriculum, but really, is it being learned? And this is where we're trying to get to make sure that the students understand it. And so our performance target was to instruct for 21st century learning with a more personalized view in conjunction with implementing the standards to have our students see the relevance in what they are learning as we make them better and more creative communicators, collaborators, critical thinkers, and within our one-to-one Chromebook environment that we've been lucky enough to now have for close to two years, and use it better. Use those tools for learning better each and every day. And so we look at this goal, and we really want to see, okay, we have that curriculum, we know it's there, how do we make sure that our kids want to learn it? And that's where the relevance kind of piece comes in, is... And, and that's where the relevance kind of piece comes in, is that we want them to see that this is important for them, for, for career or college, wherever they're trying to do. And so we, we spent a lot of time talking about this as a, as a council, and we spent a lot of time talking about it as a faculty, when we spent a few faculty meetings really getting into making sure that this is a living, breathing document, and that it really makes sense to what we're trying to accomplish with our kids. And so we want to incorporate more career ideas in there. And so we talked about having, having it one unit per, the course of a year, bringing in a person, bringing in some type of angle to make sure that this, this piece of what we're teaching is important to you for your life. And how is that important? And so really sticking with that relevance piece and tying it in. We talked about last year, trying to not just have maker space be a place, but really making an idea, is that how can you make the curriculum more creative, more important to the kids? And really tie that all back in. And then my final point on this page is that we, we moved to a new assessment program, edulastic. And really, again, make this something that's important for us. We, we kind of struggled with the program we had before, and now the teachers really like edulastic, they really like the way it looks, the way they like, they like the way they can build it themselves, and the, and the kids actually are getting used to it and enjoying it. Well, not enjoying the assessments, but they're, but they're, but they're at least kind of seeing the importance of it. And so all those pieces kind of combined make this kind of meaty, beefy goal that we hope to make sure that we're accomplishing, and, and see how we can get there. The second goal is kind of connecting, we, if we think about the first goal as kind of a combination of the rigor of school, and tying in the curriculum, and then connecting that second R of relevance, here, here we're getting back to the most important piece, which is relationships. And how do we build upon those relationships that we have with kids, and make sure that they see that we care about them, and we care about how they're doing? And we, we did a great job with this last year, and I talked about here before, how we, I personally met with different groups of kids from sixth grade, seventh grade, and eighth grade, and we thought we were doing a very nice job with, with awards and recognition. And the kids said, you're doing an okay job, let's not go too crazy, and these are some of the things that you need to do. And they really told it to us really well, and told us what we need to do better. And so we wanted to keep this goal in there, so it looks a lot like last year's goal, and just kind of making it stronger with the input from the students. And so we're going to continue with our social media as a way to celebrate the kids, and through Twitter, and through the website, and just kind of highlight the learning, and talk about our core values, and show them through pictures, show them through the student work. And, and then we, we really enjoy kind of doing our ROAR awards, the kids kind of understand that this is the core of what we want for our school culture. And just really, though, spell it out in certain ways, so that they understand that the T, what the T exactly means, what the I means, that integrity, well, what does integrity mean? And highlight it per month, highlight it per weeks, different weeks, and, and make sure that they get it and understand it. And that was something that we thought we were doing a good job about, but when the feedback from the students really told us that they needed to understand it a little bit better, so that they, they get what it means and what it really looks like. And so that was, that's the, the third tab there, is continue to tap these students to tell us what we're doing and how we're doing it. And, and really look at more ways to celebrate. And in our school council, we talked about making sure there's a way in which we can find out what kids are doing outside of school, and, and celebrate those things, because we know they do community service through their churches, we know that they can do community services through scouts. And for us to kind of reward those kids for that, and have a means to do that, is what we're going to do a better job at as we move forward. Our third goal is, again, kind of connects back to the first goal, in that, okay, we have this, we have the curriculum, we do instruction that tries to meet all of our students, but yet, are we doing it well enough? And this is the one that's worded exactly from the strategic plan, is to provide each student with personalized and targeted instruction, practice, assessment, and evidence-based intervention, while strengthening practices that promote access to ensure support for the social and emotional well-being of our students. And we've had many great discussions at a, as an administrative team about this, and really trying to make sure that we understand what, as I have up there, response to intervention, RTI, and multi-tiered system of support, MTSS, what does that mean, and what does that look like at the Nichols Middle School? How are we doing it? And how are we trying to meet the needs of every single student? And so this connects with our work through the literacy grant for Hill for Literacy. This connects, we, we had a group of teachers that became our core teachers for PBIS, for Positive Behavioral Intervention Support System. And how do we connect all these? How do we make sure that we continue the work of what we started, and make sure that we get to every single individual student where they are, to try to help and support them, to send them off to the high school prepared well enough? And so that was a lot of the work that we've done this year, but yet work that we know we need to continue, and we need to understand it better, and make sure we do it better. And our fourth goal was an added goal. It, too, is almost exactly worded from the district strategic plan, and it really was to look at more ways we can individualize our professional development. We've done a nice job here at the Nichols of, of doing ed camps, doing some unconferences, really tapping into the, to the brilliance of our, of our teachers in the building, and kind of seeing what we do well, and, and highlighting that, and making sure that we can, we have people that can do really good things. We don't need to bring in a lot of people from outside. And if we just give them a platform to present it, and we do it in faculty meetings, we do it in our PLC periods, but yet, we wanted to really highlight it, and as a faculty, this was a big one that came up from the faculty, is we want to continue that, and we want to make it stronger. And so we do this thing called pineapple charting, where up on the board, there's a, there's a board in the, in the teacher's mailroom, and a teacher can put up there that I'm doing Socratic seminar, block two and block four today. And then teachers can look at that and see, you know what, I've always wondered what Socratic seminar looks like? How do I go in there and do that? Or, since we've been using the Chromebooks a lot, that there's a lot of different technologies that keep changing. And there's teachers that are really on the cusp of that and understanding that, and there are some teachers that would love to understand it more, but would love to see what it really looks like in the classroom. And so teachers are putting up that they're doing different apps, they're doing different things with, with the technology. And so it, it's a lot safer to go into someone else's room and see someone using it, see someone doing it. And so that has become something that we've implemented, and we just want to continue it and make sure it continues to get done. We talked about just like a month ago, that we've done a faculty book study as, as a faculty, as a whole faculty, and starting this year, we put out a list of different books, and teachers chose which book they want to do. So there's going to be like small groups, because they ended up choosing, I think it was nine books, and so there's at least two or three people, and there's a couple books that have, I think, eight and nine people, and chose, chose those books. And so over the course of the year, we'll end up talking about it, using those books as a discussion, and hopefully changing and trading books, and trading the ideas, so that it wasn't just one book that we're all reading, and we get things out of it. Now there's, now there's nine different books with infinite number of ideas in it that we can kind of spread around. And we want to continue to use our committees, and, and give our teachers more leadership opportunities to, to be a part of these committees and to lead the committees. And as I wrote at the end there, utilize more professional development times for these individualized studies, using ed camp style, using, using the faculty meeting as a way to celebrate what teachers know, and how we can help and support one another.
Mr. Chair, if I could, Mr. Gagan, I noticed the order that went into the books, and fourteen teachers chose the book Teach Like a Pirate. And I saw that you had. Sort of a mini Twitter unconvention on it, a little while ago, on that particular book with the author. Can you tell us a little bit about that book, and how, how that might be a model, and how you might work with those teachers, or the teachers work with themselves, and how you see that developing over the course of the year, where that will help their teaching here at Nichols?
Yeah, so Teach Like a Pirate is by Dave Burgess, and he, there was a Twitter chat done with it, and he, it, it's one of those books about instruction, and just kind of making your, your classroom come more alive. And, and many of the books were about that, and, and just different angles on how to make your classroom more student-centered, more, and we, and our book study a couple years ago was Leaders of Their Own Learning, and making the students the leaders of their own learning. And so all nine book choices kind of had a different angle to that. And, and I just think it was wonderful to see that we took time to just kind of read the Amazon kind of ideas about each book, the summaries of each book, and then teachers just went to a Google form and chose which book that they wanted to do, and then we'll just kind of link the, link teachers up like that. And then there were people that were having a hard time deciding, and they said, well, that'd be great, if you read this one, and then we can trade, and, and that's what we were looking for. And, and it really is kind of putting it in their hands, and they really appreciate, they really appreciate that, that, that we as a district support them, and are willing to pay for the book, and willing to kind of give them a book before the summer, and it's a win-win, when it really comes down to it, that we're going to get all that information from them, and then we can, and use it. And as, as Brian said, that these authors, I've connected with many of them, and I said, is there any chance we can do some type of Twitter chat with you during a faculty time? And many of these authors are still educators, they're still teachers in classrooms, and they said, yeah, just tell me what times, and I can be there, and we can link up with your, with your teachers, and kind of have a chat about the book.
Thank you for your presentations. And one of the pieces that this kind of ties back into, for the strategic, for continuous district improvement, is, this is a wellness piece, that I always, I always talk about wellness, and we're talking about student achievement, how we're going to, but I just like that we're not going to forget the staff, the teachers, because if the staff and teachers aren't well, and how are they going to teach our students? So I like hearing about this collaborative work, and, and more on a socially, it's, because book, I think a book, of a book club, it's a social thing, which is good, and they're working together. That way, there we can get cohesive units, they're happier, if we keep all our staff happy, we all succeed in the long run. So I'm glad to hear that, and I'm glad that it's dovetailing into these improvement plans, because I see a little bit in each one, and I'd like to see a little more maybe next year, if we think about it, because I want to make sure that our teachers are all cohesive, work together, the oars going, whatever you want to call it, because when that happens, it, it, we start lifting everything. And, and that's one thing, I loved seeing the piece, and I like hearing a little bit more about the book piece, so thank you very much for that.
I, I think that's one of the reasons why the four of us kind of present together, is that there's a lot of elements throughout it. I mean, the math and literacy pieces are direct reflections on some of the stuff that we're doing at the Nichols. And right now, we're trying to study a new math program, because our math program is, is leaving, but we can talk about that another night, but, but we're looking into those same math programs that they're using right now. So it is, it is definitely, all of our oars are definitely in the water, going the same way.
Chin, we're in, you view the school improvement plan as being a multi-year process. What year are we in?
For this one?
Yeah.
I, I think, many of these goals, I would say, that, that, the first goal, when you look at it up there from the strategic plan, the culture of innovation and achievement, I don't think that's ever going to get solved. I mean, that's one that we're all digging deep into and always trying to kind of work with. But when, I could say, from Derek and my perspective, when, when we first sat here in this auditorium here, six years ago, we really had to take a hard look at curriculum, and we really had to pick it apart and figure out what was being taught, and what was actually needed to be taught. And then I think a lot of us were, for the next years that we had Teachers 21 come in, was a lot of instruction, and really working on the instruction with, with our teachers. And I think now we're kind of getting past that, now we're starting to work into some other elements of it to make our school stronger, but yet, it still comes back to that culture of innovation and achievement that is always going to be elements of it to, to make it better. But, but a couple of these goals, I would say, you look at the wording of it, look a lot like last year, but then the words of them two years ago were definitely different. So there's been elements that have carried over and kind of like tweaked and been amended.
For example, with the elementary level, the Leslie literacy cohort has been a goal for the last three years or so, but it's really evolved to the point where now your own teachers are becoming the teachers. We're no longer paying a lot of money to Leslie in terms of training, because now we've trained our own folks. It's a train-the-trainer, trainer model, and now our own people are providing that instruction, which is, which is great for the future of it. But it has really evolved over the years, there's no doubt, so.
Other questions? I, I would say this, you know, we, we have you guys come back sort of mid-year to talk about where you're at with the, with the goals, and, you know, starting, you're in the middle of starting. So I think what I'd like to do different this year is, we'll have a conversation, but pick one aspect of it, of these goals, and just tell me where you're at with that goal, do you know what I mean? And, and focus on that. And so if you bring teachers, or if you bring students, or, you know, just sort of, because I, because I think what happens a lot of times is, I sat on school improvement plan, school councils, so I, you know, you sort of forget what, you know, you set a set of goals, and then you, you're so focused on next year's, you know, school improvement plan, that you don't get to see the fruit of your labor and what you set up. And so I think it would be good to see, you know, some may not be finished. Like you said, Marty, it may go on and on, and they're always going to be there, but it's just that ability to say, okay, this is, this is how we worked on it, and this is how we sought to achieve that goal, so.
Mr. Chair, what would be the pleasure of the committee in terms of months, January, perhaps?
Yeah, I was thinking January, you know, January, early February, you know, if we split things up between you guys and Paul, so depending on how people wanted to do, and go from there, so that makes sense.
Sounds good.
Okay. Guys, thank you.
I have one quick thought on that.
Yes, sir.
I don't know, we've talked about this a number of times, is presenting these plans after we get our MCAS results.
Yeah.
Finalizing them. We know we have to write the plan this year for next year, but then we get our MCAS results, the timing of things doesn't always work out right. And for a long time here, we would present at this time of year, and then come back after we got our MCAS results. You know, to me, it makes sense to have the committee work on the plan, it's just a thought. And then we, we, that same committee gets together when we get those results at the start of the year, and just make our minor adjustments, and then come, and both things are presented at the same time. Just a thought.
We'll talk about that.
I know we've talked about that before, so.
No, I think that's, that's an interesting piece, and we can talk about that, I'll talk with the superintendent about how we do that, and I think that makes sense to some extent. But the only thing, the only piece I could see problematically is probably the high school, just because they occasionally have students who are seniors, and so they won't, wouldn't be part of the, you know, they'd be working on it, but wouldn't necessarily be part of the end result. And so that, that's the only piece I could see problematic.
Members of the school council.
Yes, members of the school council, the way. Paul's had a lot of kids at different times beyond that piece, so that's the only piece I could see that would be problematic. But I want to thank you guys, and I want to thank all your school council members, because I know it's. because I know it's, you know, sort of a thankless job. People at the, usually October get elected to the school councils and a lot of people aren't really sure what they're in for. And then somebody gets to be chair and you're like, wait a minute, what? But they do a lot of hard work and I think that they, you know, it's a, it's a volunteer and we really appreciate it. So thank you. Please convey to them that from us.
And as this group heads out, I just want to make the comment that school improvement plans are mandated by law per ed reform in 1993. But it's also an opportunity to get the entire school community with parents, in some cases students, and teacher reps on these committees and take a real deep dive into what the school's doing. And when you make it meaningful, or more meaningful as you are with these surveys and really asking and digging deep questions, it does make it more purposeful in terms of developing these plans. It used to be sort of a check the box sort of thing, but I think it's, you've, you've made it a little more meaningful. So we thank you for those surveys and that really deep dive that you're taking. Thank you.
Having, having been on this committee now seven years and seeing what used to be the communication piece, Derek, you mentioned the communication piece going back and forth. It used to be kids would get a Tuesday folder, backpack full of papers, parents would maybe go through it, maybe they just take it out, put it on the table and send it back empty. You're, you're seeing this whole evolution of your, your blog, I mean, I see the Twitter, I see all the different pieces, I get a piecemeal. Is there anything else we could do, any tweaking you're thinking on your communications? I, you, you mentioned a little bit more, it's funny to say, you say Facebook, but Facebook's so yesterday. I mean, I don't, I don't know what the next piece is going to be between Snapchat with Instagram and all that, but, but it seems like the best way to get information out.
I think a big piece was going to Blackboard Connect for us was huge because now we have the ability to email, you know, mass email, you know. I know as a parent, when we use the iAlert and you get the phone call and you're hot sinks when you get the phone call and it's, it might be picture day, you know, and an email is nice. It's a nice way to communicate, you can get it, you can read it, it's not always the dire emergency. So I think using that email system and, you know, going to our registration, new registration system with having, you know, parents putting in, going into Aspen and, and being able to access and putting in their own emails so we don't have as many errors to, to deal with and such like that. I mean, for, for me, that's a, you know, I'm looking forward to really using that once like we're able to get all the email addresses up and, and going. And that's going to be huge to be able to communicate with, with parents ongoing.
Yeah, that's been our step this year. We write our newsletter every week. It goes on Facebook, Twitter, it goes on our website every week. And now we email it to everybody every week. So, I don't, I don't know if there's another method.
No, no, I think that I, I, I go to your website, I see it, so I, I don't get it emailed to me. But it's, so you're, you're really, you're pushing it out, which is good. I didn't see that because I'm.
I'm a techie.
No, a push is, no, it's good. And I, like I say, I see Marty's stuff all the time too on Twitter. So it's, and Facebook, because Mr. Thomas's stuff, crossposts and stuff, which is great. So, no, I, I'm seeing it out there and I, so you're getting response from it, which is good.
We have, and what we've been doing every year, like our survey in the past has been really gauging when people want to get the information, what's too much. We got a lot of feedback that people don't want the alert now, phone calls unless it's an emergency, which is what Ms. Andrea was talking about. You know, so we've gotten it down. Like, and I think predictability is the key. Like, everybody knows when they're going to get the information and where they can get it from. And it's just consistently there, which is good because then when someone's saying they don't know the information, they're at the soccer field, there's another parent saying, no, it's there, you just need to log on here and it's there. It's just then up to us just make sure that we're consistent in putting the information on the calendar like we said we're going to and sending home the newsletter and doing all those things. So, that, that's what I've found, so.
And I think, I think the new website also has made it a lot simpler and easier for the community, but also for us, that I know that I've moved away from the blog to just kind of using the website and a Canva with the picture and things like that. Maybe I was a little verbose, now I'm not and it's just quick and it's there. And then the tweet kind of comes out and then a parent takes the tweet and takes the website and then puts it on Facebook. So, as, as Derek just said, that they know where they can go, or at least someone can help them and show them where to go, and, and it's there for them.
To put it on Facebook, you don't have to tweet it. Derek, can you confirm a rumor in town? That the Berklin chicken's coming back?
Yep, it's coming.
Just making sure. I heard the rumor.
I may have been at the police station today with some recording with a rubber chicken, so.
Spend some time in jail. Let's find out what he did wrong. Thank you, folks. Thanks for all rushing back again, Holly.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could continue?
Please.
The next on the agenda for my report is, we have a number of groups that rent facilities from us. One of our regular sort of renters each year is the Sunday School Basketball League. The Sunday School Basketball League has decided that they want to make a donation to the school system. And that comes in the form of a score clock or a scoreboard, which is about $6,995 scoreboard. We have worked with Jim Hutchinson, worked with Cheryl DeBenedictus, who coordinates all the rental of our facilities, worked also with Ryan Sylvia, the athletic director, and all agree that this is something that would, we would benefit from, the school system would benefit from. Sunday School Basketball has also asked that if they do purchase the scoreboard, they would like, and you see the copy of the sign, I, I sent out a little bit of a copy of it today or tonight to you in your, in your hand, approximately eighteen by twenty inch bronze plaque that would be above where any student would run into the wall and would basically state that the Henry B. Berklin Gymnasium scoreboard was donated by the Middleborough Sunday School Basketball League in 2018. So the question before the board, and not necessarily tonight, is, will you accept this donation with the conditional sign on it, which would come underneath the scoreboard, basically stating that the Sunday School Basketball League has purchased that $7,000 scoreboard?
We, Mr. Superintendent, I do want to thank Cheryl for all her hard work. Cheryl did most of it. And the superintendent and I had multiple questions that went back and forth and so Cheryl found out.
The answer is anytime we asked. We, we've never, we, we have done something similar in the sense that Mr. Breen went out for us and recruited funds that he got from the Middleborough Gas and Electric to do a portable scoreboard that we use at the high school. The portable scoreboard is essentially used for those teams that don't have a scoreboard, for example, soccer and lacrosse and field hockey. And they sort of rotate it around and share it. And so, if a parent comes late, if you will, they could see what the score of the game is. And so the only sort of issue that we had was the idea of the, the nameplate. Because we don't really have necessarily, I, I don't have an issue with it, I'm just saying, raising, it's, it's not how we use it.
I would have, I really have no issue with a nameplate. You know, when you talk about either whether it was the Middleborough G and E or the Middleborough Sunday School Basketball League, because it's not, we're not, we're not advertising Coca-Cola, which would be against our wellness policy, or chocolate, or, you know, even though we have it here. It's, it's more, I want to say it's, it's not a negative thing to me. It's not negative. I think it's actually very positive. I, no, I know, I, I think that when you put plaques on things, you've got to be careful because if it becomes, you know, if it becomes something of an issue where somebody could be offended by it, I don't think anyone can be offended by the fact that it was donated by the Middleborough Sunday School Basketball League that has been renting our facility for a long time.
And we're not naming it after them.
This is not the naming of this, it's just attributing their donation to this group. And I would also clarify by saying, when I was a youngster in Middleborough playing Sunday School Basketball, it was church against church. The CYO had two teams, the Christian, the Catholic Church had two teams. We played Central Congo, we played the Central Baptists, we played Plumpton Congo. And so it was basically church against church and that's how the name came about Sunday School Basketball. Right now, it's just a universal league that anyone can play in. There's no religious connotation or requirement, it just continues with the name of Sunday School Basketball. Sunday School's an old name for, for religious activities, we realize that. But it's also something that, with this name, it's just simply the name of the league and it's continued to be the name of the league since its origins back in the early seventies, so.
So I open up for tonight, we can make a vote tonight or we can, to wait till next meeting, whatever you prefer. But it's our intention to bring them here to a meeting and thank them for their donation.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that we accept this donation, including the plaque with gratitude from the Middleborough Sunday School Basketball League.
Thank you. Discussion. Just so everyone knows, we will be, essentially, we're going to pay for it, they're going to send, give us a check, right, Kathy?
Correct. We'll put in, we'll put in our donations account.
Right.
And then we'll make the payment.
And the only other thing that is still up for consideration is, we would pay for shot clocks.
Yeah, if we wanted to add onto this and make thirty second clocks, we could do that in a portable way with wires. We checked into the price of integrating it into the scoreboard and it was an additional $2,000, which they didn't feel was, was appropriate because they don't require them in the Sunday School League. And we really, at the HPP, unless the high school team plays there.
Right.
We really don't need them per se. It would be nice to have them if it were an additional hundred bucks or something, that would be one thing. But $2,000, we, I, I don't think, I think it's kind of unfair to ask them, but we did throw it by them and the answer was a resounding no, I believe. I know it was, so.
So we may look for a, a way to add them. So essentially, we have an extra space should anything happen. You know, as you guys have been through, that we've had problems with floors and the pa, you know, things happen. And so just to make sure that everything was ready to go, we have a backup plan, if you will.
And we currently have a wired and thirty second clock system that we just added to and replaced at the high school, which will be available in about three years, so, or two and a half years, so, yeah.
There's a motion on the table to accept. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. So thank you. Chair, would entertain a separate motion to allow the placing of the plaque. I think we should do that separately.
I, I put that as both, too.
Oh, sorry, thank you.
I put that as both, yeah.
Thank you. We're all done with that, so.
Next on my, my report this evening is the FY19 Budget Subcommittee update. We did meet as a group, most recently last week, and we made some decisions moving forward with regard to the, basically the money we have and the design moving forward. It, it did mean, for the district, it did mean not replacing a couple of teachers who retired at the elementary level, but the addition of a teacher leader or a coach, instructional coach at the complex, which would provide each school, MKG and the HPP, with an instructional coach. It also meant the elimination of some of those ideas that were forwarded in initial discussions, including a preschool teacher at the MECC and a high school links special education teacher, which hopefully after the dust settles and we take a look at the budget, we may be able to replace one of those back in after all our retirements are accounted for as moving forward. But that would obviously be a recommendation of the Budget Subcommittee. What did I miss? Anything?
Just that we're still plugging away, trying to close the gap. We are, we've had our, we have our salaries all set and as, I'm still interested, as we hire the new teachers, seeing where they came in, where we allocated money, there could be some savings. And we're going to be going through the line items to see if we can adjust those a little bit because our tuitions and services are still not quite balanced yet.
You know, our biggest problem right now is special ed tuition. Out of district placements have gone up considerably since last year. And that, I'll speak for myself, because Greg had to leave. But it's, you know, we're, we're concerned about it and don't feel that we can make additions till we make sure where we're at money-wise and move things around. It doesn't, doesn't. And I also think that the group of us understand that, you know, for schools, it's fluid. And so, we start off with a number of teachers at the kindergarten, but we know if all of a sudden, like everyone talked about, we get an influx of students, then we're going to have to look at that. The same thing with the elementary schools, the same thing everywhere. So it just has to be fluid. But given where we're at, we have to be careful.
Is that without any other questions on the Budget Subcommittee? Okay.
Mr. Chair, have we received any funds for the foster bus, busing?
We have not received them as of yet. We continue to send our monthly invoices to DCF, but Mr. Young might be able to share a little more info.
She's aware of them? Yeah, she's aware. So, I will see her at the end of the month again. I'm sure I will continue our conversation, but.
But her response to you that there was nothing in the budget for that?
At this time, correctly. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to my report. School Choice Memorial, Memorial Early Child who Center or the MECC, I don't say that very often, so the MECC. We had opened up School Choice for three spots at the MECC. We've had five requests, one of them including a pair of twins or a set of twins, two of them being faculty members, which we had put a priority on. So, at this point, we would have two spots basically and a lottery for the other two spot, three spots, excuse me, with two spots, we'd have a lottery for the other three spots, but we, we, one spot, but we have a pair of twins. So if we accepted one, we could sort of eliminate one. So the question before us, and I asked Heidi, Holly to do a little work on the numbers with regard to incoming, and she predicts that we certainly would be able to accommodate another two students if we were willing to expand the School Choice students from three at the MECC to five at the MECC that would take care of all the requests that we have on record for the MECC. That's the question before the board. She's also looking at the possibility, obviously, of possibly the preschool teacher, that she's sort of lost in the, in the budget discussions and that perhaps the addition of these five students this year might, it make, might make a better decision for the Budget Subcommittee to look at the needs of her school in terms of instructionally.
I'd move that we increase the number from three to five at the MECC.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Oakley?
Can I ask what that is?
Good question. School Choice is a program that came in several years ago, but basically right after ed reform, that allows parents to decide what School Choice schools they want to go to. But towns need to determine, and school committees make that determination, if they, number one, accept School Choice as a district, and number two, how many students they want to accept under School Choice. We have, over the few, last few years, really opened this up. It was originally at the high school, we had five spots for just really graduating seniors. And we've now expanded that to the first year, nine to 12, and we went 20 spots. And then the year before last, we went to middle school at five at each grade, six, seven, eight. And then last year, we expanded it to include the elementary. And then for this year coming, we actually expanded it to the kindergarten. So by stating that we would have five spots at the kindergarten level, that would mean there'd be five openings for School Choice, that if somebody from Berkeley, Taunton, Bridgewater, Wareham, Carver, the child of a, of a faculty member wanted to bring their child to go to kindergarten at the MECC, they could do so. And basically what the state does is provides us with money per student for those students. We do lose a number of students to School Choice in the area. I know we had one child just graduated, I believe, from Old Rochester, whose mom was a teacher at Old Rochester. And so it was easy for her and that, that child went to Old Rochester High School. There are some children that go to other schools for different reasons. Might be Division One athletics, it might be the feeling that somehow they'd get a better education somewhere else. And that's what Choice comes in, that's how Choice comes in. But to be a Choice District, it has to be voted by the school committee. We have set a number. This is the first time, we sort of took a dive into the kindergarten in terms of the numbers and, and the dust has settled now and we have five requests, so that's why the request to go from three to five, because it will not affect class sizes that drastically. It obviously does, in five classes, there'll be an additional student that we would not have had otherwise. But it also will bring.
Five thousand dollars ahead.
Five thousand dollars per student into the district.
And so.
And there's talk of that money going up.
Mr. Oakley, a couple of things. One is. One is, I previously was a school committee member at a district that, quite frankly, if School Choice didn't exist, the district wouldn't exist, especially at the high school. The current makeup of the high school in Avon is about 400 kids, of which 200 are choice. So it's about half. And that's the only way we could essentially pay the bills. And so to me, when I came to this committee, I recommended it primarily because whether or not you accept choice, your students can go other places, as Mr. Lynch said, and you're losing money.
Might as well have it go both ways, right?
Exactly. And that was always my point. And especially where it wasn't, we've never been told that we were sort of at an excess in certain grades. So, you know, that filled up. One of the things that we've really done, too, is we really tried to make sure that if money came in, that we keep it within the schools. You know, so that, you know, the money in the high school has gone to a couple of additional positions that we wouldn't have without the money and been able to do. The money in the high school, for example, went to buying the freshman class computers. So we were able to get computers out of those funds. One of the great things that we were able to do, too, with the money, was pre-buy them before the year. We ran into the first time when we bought them, we were buying computers and didn't get them till August, and they couldn't be distributed to the kids till November by the time they were all set up. So this time, we were able to buy them June, and they were ready to go day one of class. So.
And that's because of the incoming
Right.
Choice money?
Exactly. We didn't get money from the capital improvement committee that, last year, for additional computers, and we're able to use that money for that. And so for me, it's always been a way to offset losses that we're having through choice the other way.
And Mr. Chair, on top of that, one of the things we do is, and Brian, Mr. Lynch does it, and our administration does it, is they keep an eye on those numbers and let us know. Because we have to do this every year, you vote this every year, but once you take a student in, they're in. If they come in in kindergarten, they're here the whole way to 12 if they choose. They could choose to leave if they wanted to, but usually, you're hoping they stay in because they want to be part of the community. But what we can also do is, as we look beyond this, if we start having a lot of development, which we are watching, that's our big concern, is to make sure our numbers in our classrooms don't go too high, we can, we can close off additional School Choice. If we run into an overpopulation, or it looks like it's headed that way, we can ratchet it back and hold back to make sure we don't have that. And I know that we monitor that as part of this program.
And one thing I want to say, too, that's been really important to me from the high school level, is you have kids in 10th or 11th grade whose parents get divorced, and they go live with, their custodial parent moves to another town. So you spent your whole life in Middleborough to the 10th grade, and at least now you can stay in Middleborough. Whereas before, that wouldn't have happened. They would have had to gone outside our district and started anew in 10th grade. And that just doesn't make sense at times. And I think for a lot of those kids, it's, it's been helpful and been encouraging for them to be able to stay here. So.
We've also experienced declining enrollment.
Up until recently.
Yeah. Recently, it started to go back up a little bit. And we've got to keep an eye on those trends also.
We had, I think we had a, Mr. Chair, I think we had a peak in 2007 at about, 2009 at about 3,700 for a district. It was, it was a pretty good peak, and now we're teetering under, around the 3,000 mark as a district, so. But starting a little upward kick.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Motion on the table is to move kindergarten from three to five. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my report are a couple of field trips that require your attention as a school committee. It includes an overnight trip, and it includes also a trip to Italy next year.
Chaperone on the Italy trip? I'm sorry. Mr. Chair, regarding the Italy trip, the only concern that I had was when they leave, we just want to make sure that they don't leave in, that June, is it June 23rd? Looks like that, the departure date, which is the third line down in that, I was looking at it, looked like a June 23rd. Is that, has to be, I know our calendar's set, and I think the 17th is what we have for end date for next year. So I just want to make sure we don't, if it happens, it's educational, so I'm not as worried about it, but. By the way, it is a wonderful trip, the Italy trip. I did actually look at this at one time. I had heard rumors about this from my son. I was hoping it was going to be a year later where my daughter could go on, because I was going to say, can we expand it to eighth grade? So the two of them could both go at the same time. But it's an interesting trip. And from what I, what I looked at it, it's a, it's a day and a half in Venice, a day and a half in Florence. They visit Saint Francis, the Basilica in Assisi, the Basilica de Francis in Assisi. Then they go down to Rome, where they spend a couple days in Rome, and they actually go to both the Colosseum, the Forum, as well as the Vatican, and they have a day to themselves to explore, which is phenomenal. Not that I'm, hey, two years ago, I wouldn't vote for any of these foreign trips, but I have a new, new view on things. I still would like at least one parent to have a passport, just in case something happens and they need to get there. But this is a wonderful trip, and I'd move that we, we approve the Italy trip for next year as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Shouldn't I do that first?
The only thing I think is, I think they choose the dates based on trying to get savings for the kids. And so I think that's important. And I understand that it might be close to the end of the year, given what we went through this year. But that's the thing we try to avoid, but sometimes you can't.
Any further question, Mr. Oakley?
In the asterisk down the bottom, it says something about must attach a list of all students invited to attend. Does that mean that not all students, well, not all students at whatever grade level this is, are allowed to attend?
That's a good question.
It's an open invitation?
Right. The way it's always been is
High school, yeah.
High school can go, you have to attend a meeting, and that, you know, and I think, if I'm correct, a parent has to attend a meeting, too, if I remember correctly. Then that starts the process, and so that group is allowed to go, is allowed to decide whether or not they want to go.
And if a student has lost their privileges for whatever reason, socially, academically, social behaviorally, they are not allowed to go on a trip. This is, because it's part of school.
Yeah. So no problem. Mr. Row.
I actually, this is, looking at itinerary, it's funny, I did this exact same trip with EF with a school group in 2004. So EF does do an excellent job. I think one of the things that we do well as educators and here, is you are going with a program that will protect the kids, keep the kids safe. They are, as much as insurance policy, as they are safety net.
Absolutely.
Truly. So they do a good job. So I do wish them the best of luck. It is an excellent trip, and I'm glad they're going with EF for this.
And I said last year, my daughter went on the trip to London, and a week before, there was, there was an incident. And they sent a note to all the parents to say, if you'd like to cancel, feel free, and you will get all your, or will return all your money, too. So I thought, you know, I couldn't agree more that they really do a nice job. They keep parents informed of what's going on in the area and try to quell concerns if you have them.
I have, I have two daughters that have been on this trip, and they both absolutely loved it. So I could speak as a parent and certainly support the benefits of such a trip. They still talk about it, so.
So motion on the table is to go to the Italy trip. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Take a motion for the overnight trip.
That, I think it's the same one.
No problem. I'm just making sure I'm not missing anything. Anything else, Mr. Lynch?
That's, that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Maybe we could create a policy that a school committee member has to be on one of these trips? I'm sorry, I'm just trying to figure a way to, we can, we can try.
I believe at the back end of this, it does have a price for an adult to go on this trip. It does.
But we'd have to evaluate experience, and since Mr. Rose already been on one.
Last March. Well, it's been two months.
The only thing, anything else, Mr. Lynch, for your?
That's it.
Thank you. The only thing I want to bring up for MSBA discussion is, we're still working on everything. This 60 percent submission is, next up is 90, no.
Sixty in July.
Sixty in July, thank you. We are at the end of the month, going to have another discussion about brick, if you didn't see the selectman's meeting, so we'll continue that discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
For anyone who did, I apologize for being so
Passionate.
Passionate.
Thank you. Next up is the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move that we approve the consent agenda presented this evening.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? MASC, I just have up there that a couple of things that have been ongoing. If people are interested, please let me know. I'm still working, I had an issue with my calendar, so I apologize, but I will be sending out the working protocol meeting as soon as I can. The other thing I just wanted to make note of, as far as subcommittees go, we did finish with the superintendent's evaluation, so I would really like the superintendent subcommittee to get together and start to work with him on goals for the year. In the past, the goals have really mirrored the course you were taking, which
You graduated from.
So we thank you for that. And then the same with the subcommittee on policy. We have, my understanding is a considerable amount of policies to update from Ann, and we also are going to discuss naming, how we name various things and create, we don't have a policy, we've begun to look at some of that, and we will have a conversation about that. We have a brief policy, but not a full policy. Anything else before I move to action items? Action items, we have taken care of everything, except, as everyone knows, we did the superintendent's evaluation. In the eyes of the chair, the superintendent received a positive evaluation according to the terms of his contract. Then the superintendent is, in my mind, entitled to a salary increase. So the chair would open discussion for a salary increase with superintendent.
I agree.
Thank you. I'm glad. I was hoping everyone would agree with me.
I think that, I would say that, as we said last meeting, he's, he's achieved the goals that he had set out, that we agreed to. So I think that, once again, that he'd be entitled to a raise. Thinking numbers in my head, trying to figure out what would be the best. I think, I think the maximum is 3%.
It is, according to terms.
And I believe that he's earned it. I believe, based on even the stuff that we see tonight and the, and the previous meetings when they brought it up to us, I believe that he's earned that 3%. And I would move that we increase the salary of the superintendent 3% in accordance with the contract.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Oakley?
I was wondering, I continue to be more and more impressed with Mr. Lynch every time I see anything from you or deal with you, but I just wanted to know more about the process. You made it sound like there's a, like kind of a formal evaluation process. And I wondered if you could just talk a little bit about that.
Sure. So each individual member, this is right before you joined the committee.
Okay.
So each individual member gave me their formal evaluation of superintendent. There is an actual format that we use, and an actual evaluation tool that is used for every superintendent for the state of Massachusetts. What happens is this, the superintendent, in some ways, fills it about his goals, but the rest of it is universal, if you will. We grade it based on needs improvement, meeting, meeting goal, me, I
Profession.
Profession. Thank you.
I think that might work.
So there's four things that you can choose from. So we, they gave them to me in April, and then, last meeting? Last meeting. We, I put them together. Now, what I have to, so what happens was, this year, I took everyone's, I put it in one format and send it out to everybody. You should have, oh, you actually don't, because the form can't be done online, you have to physically handwrite the form.
I see.
So I do have a copy for you. Thank you, Mr. Oakley. The, once that's done, we actually, I have to sign the form and, and send it to the state. Superintendent's forms are available for people to look at, and one of the good things about it, if you think about going forward, is when choosing a new superintendent who's been a superintendent in the past, you can go online and see their evaluations.
Got it. And one, one final question.
Sure.
Given that I was not part of the evaluation process, would you recommend that I abstain from this vote?
You can. It's not a problem. Just so you know, so again, his contract calls for, if we believe he has a good evaluation, then he can get a percentage increase anywhere from 2 to 3%.
Oh.
That's contractual. And so my point would be, you could not have done the evaluation, but realizing that he met his contractual obligation, you could still vote for it
Got it.
That way, if that makes sense.
Yep. I see why you said it that way, then. Okay. I'm with you. Thanks.
So, motion on the table is for a 3% raise with superintendent. Does anyone else have any additional comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to wish the very best to the following retirees. Evelyn Doyle, Mary Ramsey, Michelle Ward, Sandra Darcy, and Cynthia, Cynthia Kuhn. Welcome to William Corles, Megan Leary, Catherine Tierney, and Edward Lewis Ned Carpenter, oh.
Chapetiere.
Chapetiere. And thank you for the Savers donation and Bay State Textiles.
Thank you. Our next meeting is Thursday, June 21st.